Commission meeting to order and the full of you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item will be a proclamation and will be going to the councilor, so Shelley and Angela, if you will join me at the microphone.
Well, this is really, really fitting to be a public proclamation that councilors have to go. I don't know how hard it worked, but how important it is to our kids. I just to tell you a show of stories, many years ago, I came to Fort Riley and I had a library door and they asked me, is it trained? And I said, well, I'm a trainer myself, so, so no. And so I said, is there a good doctor here? They said, there's a lady named Jane Lynam and she went down by the lake, so I took my dog out there and got to chatting and said, what do we used to do? And she said, as a school counselor. So you see, this woman has something really hard to do something much easier than this, so we appreciate that. So, there is a little proclamation.
You bet. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. Whereas school counselors work with parents, teachers, and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. Whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Now therefore, Mike Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims the week of February 4 through 8 as National School Counseling Week and encourages all citizens of Manhattan to offer their support of school counselors.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Ingram, School Counselor at Anthony Middle School, and this is Angela Bunter. She's School Counselor at Eisenhower Middle School. And we just really want to thank the City of Manhattan for being willing to recognize School Counseling Week. We do a lot to advocate for students, not only academically, but with their social, emotional health and that job is always ever-changing and we just appreciate the support and definitely being willing to recognize. So, thank you very much.
Can you stay here for just a minute?
Oh, yes.
We ought to put me in the middle, so we have.
Thank you.
So, item three on the agenda tonight are public comments, and at the first meeting of every month, we have public comments, and these are comments that are concerning anything except those items that are on the agenda for tonight. So, if, I'll open the public comment, if anyone would like to come forward and talk about anything that they'd like to talk about, now's the time. We knew this was going to happen because there's not only the President's address tonight, there's a K-State-KU game, so we appreciate those who did come. All right, well, seeing no one from the public, then we'll close the public comment portion and move to Agenda Item Four, which is Commissioner Comments. So, Linda, do you want to start?
I happened to see a city road crew this morning, Brian, out hurriedly filling some of the cracks and using that heat flame, the flame that's.
propane gun, yep.
Yeah, that seals it, and it was appreciated how fast they were working before this next storm comes through, so.
We got a lot of holes to patch.
I can imagine.
We've got two crews working full-time on it.
There, I was happy to see that. And I just wanted to say, I happened to notice in the county's minutes that the household hazardous waste will be accepted from the public, not commercial or not business, but from the public. It's coming Saturday, February 9th, beginning at 8 o'clock, I think it's all morning. But if you have some paint or insecticide or some kind of product at your house that you've been tripping over, looking at for a long time, and you just want to get rid of it, that's the place to take it, so just wanted to suggest that. Karen McCullough used to say that pretty regularly, and we haven't heard it for a while. Thanks.
I just want to mention, you know, following up on the city pet licensing ordinance that was passed last year, where the local vets can of course sell the licenses, and we've got great support from at least two of them out there. The Fur Family Animal Hospital and the Little Apple Veterinary Hospital have done a good job in helping us sell licenses, and so the numbers are up for the, you know, first three months of the year. We sold 112 more than normal. We're hoping to do better, so I encourage, you know, the other veterinary hospitals that are out there, like the Animal Doctor Westside, Candlewood Vet Clinic in Blue Hills, and also the KSU Veterinary Clinic to get on board and also help us sell the pet licenses, because that is what supports our animal shelter.
Yes, I have a few comments here. I want to say congratulations to Tom Loeb, I hope I said your name correctly. He is the 2019 Riley County Spelling Bee winner from Anthony Middle School. I know that doesn't impress a whole lot of people, because it's a spelling bee, but I think it's really, really cool that we have spelling bees and geography bees and science fairs. Those don't seem to be out in public nearly as much as assessments, assessments, and assessments. So it's, congratulations to Tom, and wish him good luck as he goes off to the Nationals. The Kansas Association of School Board Members, School Board Members and the United Superintendent's Association Women's Leadership Summit, the first one of its kind is being held in Manhattan yesterday and today. And Governor Kelly was here last night at the Flint Hills Discovery Center for the reception. She spoke to these, to the extraordinary leaders, which give guidance to our principals and our schools and our children and families. So it was great that they had their first one here, and hopefully they continue to have a few more annual ones in Manhattan, Kansas. We are expecting freezing, we are expecting ice and sleet again tonight, probably early morning, so please drive carefully. Sometimes you might not see it, but it's going to be pretty slick and slippery, so start off a little bit earlier, or maybe put salt on your driveways right now and take care of it so it's not a shocker as you get up in the morning. I also want to say kudos to Jared Wassinger and Jason Hilders. I think on every Monday now, at least for the past three Mondays, on our Facebook page for City of Manhattan, they've been giving about 20-minute updates on not only what the commission is going to be talking about on this Tuesday for today, for example, but also things that might be of interest to our community members. So if you're not going to tune in and watch our program on Tuesday nights, there's always a little synopsis, just to get an idea of what's going on in the city as we talk about it. We're trying to get more people engaged in all the city events and city things that are not as exciting, let's say, but to keep you updated at the same time in short snippets of it, so thank you.
Just a couple of items, maybe. The ice storm that we had last week, I think a lot of people don't quite appreciate what all the street crews do to get that in shape, as well as the RCPD, and then our responders who have to go out in this weather and sometimes help people who have had an accident. So, that was a tremendous effort, and the circumstances were about as bad as it gets, because they can't, if it's raining, you can't pre-treat, and then when the snow begins to fall on top of that or it turns immediately to ice, there's not that much that can be done except sanding, and even the sanding trucks are having trouble. So, a lot of folks worked long hours in order to get us fixed up, so we appreciate that. We also appreciate Fire Department and their response down to the unfortunate accident down in Ogden. Got our guys down there in just a few minutes out of the airport, Fire Department. These kind of tragedies are always bothersome to the entire region that hears about it, but I know our Fire Department and others try to promote smoke detectors, and our Code Department tries to promote making sure we've got enough exits and things like that, so just an absolute tragedy, but we really appreciate the quick response that your guys gave us on that, Scott. That was good work. We'll move to Item Five, which is the Consent Agenda. And I think, as everyone knows, the Consent Agenda are those items that the commission has considered before or that are just housekeeping in nature to make sure our administration continues to work when we're not meeting. So, does anyone on the commission have a question or a comment about the Consent Agenda items? Does anyone from the public have a comment on the Agenda, the Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, let me go back to the commission. If there are no further comments, we will ask for the motion.
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda. Second?
Call the roll. Mayor Dodson? Yes. Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Now we'll move to Item Number Six, which is the General Agenda, and Item A under that is Consider a Contract Amendment for Design of the Southwest Neighborhood Recreation Center at Douglas Park. And I see Jason on here, but it's really Eddie Estes, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Dave is with him, so.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Yes, Mr. Baker, appreciate him being here with us tonight. Very important that he can communicate to you some of the Douglas Center Advisory Board concerns, comments, some meetings that we've had with them since we met last on this topic, so we'll just get started. A reminder, we had this discussion back in December. City Administration had a discussion with the commission to inform you that we could not use community development block grant funds for the construction. We call it the Douglas Recreation Center. The nomenclature we've been using is Southeast Neighborhood CENREC. Advisory Board, I think, is more in favor of the Douglas Recreation Center, and so you'll see both of those names a little bit in the memo and tonight. But as we discussed with you in December, the fact that we could not use community development block grant funds for the construction of that facility. Through that discussion, the commission did express interest in pursuing the construction of the facility. Commission also expressed interest in re-engaging the community to make sure that amenities that would be considered for this facility do meet community needs. We've tried to stuff amenities into that previous budget, and it kind of ran the show, so to speak. Advisory Board has always been in favor of an elevated walking track. We know that from public meetings that we had and interaction with the Douglas Center Advisory Board before we'd ever got to the design and discussion in December. We can continue to use community development block grant funds for design work, for site work, parking lot work, but not the construction of the facility. So, that was the discussion that we had back in December. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but again, I believe the commission expressed interest in pursuing construction of the facility. Commission was interested in re-engaging the community to make sure that amenities that could be considered for the facilities did meet the community's needs. So, from that meeting, and Mr. Baker has assisted with public meetings that we've had. Is that microphone working? There we go. City Administration has hosted a couple of meetings, and David's been at those meetings, assisted with those, and I thought it'd be important that he reflect the information that we received and the comments that we received at those meetings.
Commissioners, last year, our Rec Department staff, we took a trip to Kansas City, and we visited six different recreational facilities and brought back a lot of ideas. And it's interesting that after we conducted this survey last month, there were both meetings were at the Douglas Center, one on Sunday and one on Thursday, and after reviewing the results of the survey, all the amenities that we've been wanting to put in the new facility, those were the things that the new survey showed. The center is doing great things today for the Manhattan community. It's amazing the things that are happening there on a daily basis. If you had the opportunity to come by, you could see the things that are going on there and how important it is that we get this new facility so that we can continue to do the things that we need to do, you know, in recreation. The facility is serving the community today in a way that it's never served it in the past. And one of the most important things the Advisory Board was concerned about was that elevated track. We were not going to be able to do that with the HUD money, there was just not enough in the budget. And so now we're hoping that we can, with the new design, that we'll be able to add amenities to the new facility that will meet all the needs that the community has been asking for. Manhattan, we are a little bit behind in terms of indoor recreation facilities that people can have, families can come and enjoy. And we're, this is, we're going into the third year with this, on this project. So, my goal and my hope is that we can get this one done first and get it done quickly. And of course, we know we have the other two coming on, but Manhattan is very deserving of indoor recreation facilities, and that's what we're trying to achieve here with the Douglas Center project.
One thing that's also important to note, as we put in the memo also, that if we're not using community development block grant funds for the construction of the facility, we obviously don't have to utilize Davis Bacon wage rates, which allows that budget theoretically to expand, because we wouldn't have to pay that elevated rate. So, again, there's some reasoning as to why we want to re-engage the community, reevaluate this design, and make sure, if we're going to progress to construction, that it includes the amenities that truly is going to provide for the needs of the community. So, tonight, our recommendation is a contract amendment with Bruce McMillan's team. And I put up here for a percentage of the design and a solid estimate of construction cost. The intent would be to have Bruce McMillan's team re-engage with the community, make sure that we are trying to provide the amenities the community would like to see, and take that to a 30% design, some, something, some conceptual that we can bring back to you with a solid budget estimate. And if it's something that you're supportive of, then we would move on to final construction, design documents, and entertain construction of the facility. So, tonight, recommendation is a contract amendment for a percentage of design. When I say a percentage of design also, in the memo I said, if an elevated track was to be considered, the current design, we could only use, you know, 25, 30% of that current design. I'm talking about bringing back 30% design, and Bruce would have to help me out with this a little bit, but elevated track would dramatically alter the current design. He would have to really look at that facility again. He would still be able to use some of the site work design, so that's some of the aspects of the 25 to 30% of the existing design that he would still be able to use with any redesign of this facility. But elevated track would cause a dramatic redesign. That's why it would be a good idea to come back with a percentage of design, show that to the commission, see if you're supportive before we continue into the final design. That's our presentation tonight. We're certainly happy to answer questions. Bruce McMillan is here in the audience as well, and I know he'd be happy to answer the questions as well.
If I, if I remember right, and I could be wrong about this, so correct me if I'm wrong, with the elevated track, it was estimated that the building was going to be smaller in order to fit in the budget?
We've looked at a number of different potential designs, and some designs could bring that in a little bit, because currently, right now, with an at-grade walking track, which adds another 18, 20 feet to the size of the facility, to accommodate that six feet, nine feet on each side of the courts for an at-grade, yes, and Bruce, you might, I don't want to misspeak.
Well, I think the issue though, there Eddie, was that if we were constrained by a top-line budget of a certain amount, let's say 3.5 million, that the addition of an elevated track would then constrain the rest of the things in the facility.
Yeah, the mayor asked my question better than me, for sure. That was where I was getting at, is, for one, if we, if we're staying, when you bring back this original, this next design, 30%, if it's going to stay in that top-line budget? And if it does stay in that top-line budget, does the facility need to be smaller? And I ask that, because in our last conversation, I thought that we kind of assumed that doing a racetrack was going to be more money, and there seemed to be some willingness to do some fundraising efforts, so I didn't know if that has been taken off the table or just now staying within the original budget, or how we're approaching that.
We hope that, in talking with Bruce, there is the possibility the facility could come in a little bit. And the savings of that facility, the square footage of that building shrinking, could we, could we turn that into an upper track? Could we also, we anticipate there could be 200,000, 250,000 of Davis Bacon wages. We've considered that if we are not using federal funds, that 200 or 300,000 dollars also could go into construction of the facility, and we would, we're hopeful that that, those two things potentially would allow us to be able to put that walking, elevated walking track. You know, we're working with projections, we're working with estimates. You don't know those things until you get bids back in. Bruce, am I accurate with?
That, what Eddie's explaining is certainly correct. Bruce McMillan, 55 points, Avenue Architect of Record on the project. The footprint, Commissioner, could potentially come in slightly. However, even with a three-lane elevated track, we still have to clear, for the most part, the courts below. And the options that we have had our structural engineer look at is either a suspended track system from the structure above, or a supported track system with an intermediate storage area that actually we're spanning between sections around the perimeter of the building. The folks at Douglas Park have expressed that they would be willing to live with a few, maybe one, maybe two, fewer pickleball courts. And that has been a big issue, pickleball courts. And I will let the Advisory Board members that may be present address that particular item if they care to do so. The footprint, however, is still going to need to allow for the track above avoid as much overlap of the court area as we can avoid. Your volume might be larger. We're heating and air conditioning, more space. The bathrooms, because of the occupant load, is going to increase. And we will have an elevator or a lift, stairs too, for proper exiting. So those are all items that we're still going to be considering throughout this entire course of the reevaluation on the project. So, footprint alone isn't, isn't, isn't by all means a reduction in cost, so there are, there are balancing things that are going to have to be looked at.
Yeah, and, thank you, Bruce. To consider also, we're trying to focus construction budget on the building itself and utilize community development block grants, as I said, with parking aspects, site work aspects. Those things were included in that overall budget previously, so trying to separate those out a little bit. So, when we talk 3335, we're trying to focus that just on the building itself. And site, design, parking, trying to break that out and still utilize community development block grant funds.
Got it. Okay.
Everything's tight, there's no doubt about it.
I would like to address that pickleball issue. I think the new building, originally, we were talking about four pickleball courts in the original plan. And if we took out one, which would put us back to three, three in this new, in the new building, we still have two pickleball courts at the Douglas Center that we use currently now. There's two pickleball courts on the basketball court outside, and then we have two here in the city auditorium. And I believe we're going to have some in the new facilities, in the other two facilities coming on. So, there's going to be more than enough pickleball courts in this community as time goes on.
Originally, when we talked about this, I thought I was hearing it was going to be a walking track. And then last night at the Parks and Rec meeting, I heard at the two other gyms, you're talking about a running track. And I, I'm, is there any difference at all? Do we just switch the terminology interchangeably?
Interchangeable.
Is that why you're also now using the term elevated, elevated track? Or are the supports the same, it doesn't matter, or it shouldn't matter if it's walking or running? But I just wanted to know there's a difference.
Well, the elevated track is a track that's going to be on the second floor.
Right.
And that's primarily for safety reasons, and you have other things going on at the same time. Now, if you want to run on that track, that's probably all you would do. You could designate a special time where you just ran on it. But this Douglas Center, ours is going to be probably a little smaller than the other one, so ours would probably be primarily for walking.
Because you're just talking about three lanes.
Yes.
And I'm thinking about people who really are walking, being runners weaving in and out, or. So I don't, I just wondered about the difference between at the facilities.
There really isn't a difference.
Okay.
You might use them differently at different times.
Different times, okay.
But the running, walking track at the middle school, similar to what we're talking about, running, walking track would be at the Douglas Center.
Okay. Just from my observation, we do have some experience with lifts that don't work, so I would like for us to go for the elevator. And I appreciate the attention you're giving this and the re-engaging the community too, because we had a budget limit before that we were trying to operate under, because that's what, the amount of money we thought we would get, and now that's not. That ceiling isn't there anymore. So, that re-engagement, getting people to think in less constrained terms is important. I'm interested in satisfying the need for pickleball. I don't know how many we need. As a community, we don't know what, look at the growth we've had in the last three years, we don't know what the growth will be in the future. But I don't want to, you know, I want the people in the community that have an interest like that to be able to move forward and not be constrained. So, I just, I'd like to move forward with the application for the community development block grant money, and I'd like, if we have to pick a size, is that what we're, you're talking about tonight? A size of a bill, the building, so you can apply for this CDBG or what?
Tonight, we're simply making a recommendation that we do execute a contract amendment with Bruce McMillan to re-engage with the community and develop a percentage design of a facility.
Okay. I understand that. I just wanted to be sure that we were all talking, saying the same thing.
I have a couple of questions. The, the original plan, could you execute that?
It certainly could be constructed. I, I think what we've heard to date, though, as we've met two public meetings and conducted a, some survey, that multipurpose space is very important, that's something that we've not included in the current design, we weren't able to provide that space.
I understand the argument on that, but what, what we did was, with the original thing, we, we went through all kinds of discussion, and there was about forty people here that, you know, were for the pickleball thing and didn't much care for the elevated track, and, and I, I guess we had the whole thing ready to go, and then the, the funding fell through, right?
That's correct.
So, and, and what we've decided to do now is, since the funding fell through, and it was constrained around, what, three point three million, that we're going to increase the cost now, right?
Potentially. I think we have to make that determination.
And what drove this to begin with was the fact that it wasn't going to be property tax, and I guess what troubles me is, I didn't have a problem when it fell through saying, fine, we'll have to commit property tax to the original amount, but when you increase it, and all this is going on property tax, and, you know, people are saying, oh, we're not constrained by the budget now, because it's property tax, but we should still be constrained, because it is property tax, and that's what troubles me. I mean, it seems like we're going back to revisit all this, and it's open-ended, and I'm not particularly enthused about it at this point.
I think we've been trying to maintain a focus of the three-three to three-five budget for any potential construction. When we originally engaged the community, elevated walking track was important to the community, it's always been something that the advisory board had been in favor of, it simply couldn't be afforded in that budget scenario that we were working with before. Again, we feel like if we separate out some site work, separate out some parking, separate out the design, not have to utilize Davis-Baker, we feel like, potentially, if we're able to shrink the building a little bit, we need to consider looking at that elevated walking track. That was something that was desired from our first public meetings that we started having, we simply couldn't afford it into that three point two that we were working with, with HUD funding.
I also think one of the other things that's very important is those other two buildings that are online to be built, they're going to have the elevated track, and so this building should have everything that those other buildings have, even if it may be a little smaller, the building should have equal amenities.
But still, those other buildings were funded through a sales tax. I mean, I'm, I'm back to the funding source, I'm, I'm not concerned about the, the track or any of that, it's just that what, what we're fixing to do here is put three more million dollars on the property tax rolls, that that's what we're fixing to do, and I'm not so sure that's such a good idea. I, I a hundred percent supported it when we could use the community block grant money, because that wasn't going to affect the property tax. And I understand you can still use some of it, but, but that, that's, that's where I'm at, I'm, I'm interested in the numbers, not the, you know, whether the track is there or not, not as relevant as the fact that this is...
I think it's worth noting also, since we're not using those community development block grant funds, since we're not using two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand of community development block grant funds for the next twenty years to fund the construction, those funds are going to be returned back into the community for the community to be able to use as they always have, well, Eric's not here, as they have in the past years. So there's, there's money that always is going to be returned back into the community with those funds.
Commissioner, we, we do owe you a financial analysis and a breakdown, you know, this evening, we were trying to get back in to the design, factor in the Davis-Baker wages coming out of that estimate, our scope with Bruce clearly says three and a half million dollars, not to exceed that, but come within a three and a half million dollar budget, but you're right, we do owe you. There's some strategies we've talked about with you all, that include sales tax, some strategies we've talked about internally that include special park and rec funds. We'll do our best to show you, if those don't materialize, then what type of mill levy we'll be looking at in 2023, 2024, when those temp notes come off and we go to permanent funding, but that is part of a future discussion, and especially as we get that budget refined and this product refined, we'll bring those details forward. We got discussions coming into February, talking about how to handle quite a large amount of debt that we're going to be embracing as we pursue the levy, as we pursue the runway, as we pursue North Campus Corridor, Aggieville, and this joint maintenance facility. Synrec's in that list, and it's a list of a lot of projects and a lot of, a lot of impact financially, and we have to have a strategy to get there, but it is one of those components that we keep talking about from a sales tax perspective, and going back to the community and asking that question, but more detailed breakdown forthcoming.
I feel like we, as a commission, made a commitment for three recreation centers. We had a strategy to fund all three of them, and one has fallen through. We created this situation by only putting two of them in the sales tax ballot initiative. We could have put three, but we thought we had another avenue or another, another way to fund it. I, I look at the North Campus Corridor as an example of a project that we just have faith that the staff's going to find a way, and that's kind of how I want to proceed with Douglas Center, I want to deliver on the commitment that the commission made to the south side of town, and deliver a recreation center there. And so I'm, I, I don't want to do property taxes either when, but I think, I mean, if we can pull it off on the North Campus Corridor and some of these other things that we do, I, I think we can find a way to, to at least partially fund the, and come up with a strategy for, to build this activity center.
Yeah, I think, you know, I know we said just three years, but I know this has been in the back burner for, since I've been on the city commission, there's always been conversations about things are going to happen to the Douglas Center, we're going to change it, we're going to renovate it, so it's been there much longer than three years, it just didn't have a true champion behind it. You don't have a Chamber of Commerce and Kansas State University and school districts like you did for the other projects, so this is truly a neighborhood champion project, and I think there's an equity issue. If we look at the two middle schools and their rec centers that are going to be developed, they had people advocating for them, because there are constituents in those neighborhoods that would utilize them, but they also have different types of neighborhoods, and we all know that in the Douglas Center, we took the pool away, we thought, oh, we'll just put it at City Pool, they don't need a pool anymore, and we keep doing things to the Douglas Center area and that, that neighborhood that are not really pro-neighborhood, and we need to think about how to keep that community intact, keep the, the, whether it's the senior citizens or the children, all coming back to that one spot, that's their, that's where they meet, that's where they have their functions, events, that's where all of us go, my children went there many, for many years, for many, several activities. We were confined to the CDBG budget, because we thought that would take care of it, and that's why I think, at least myself, I'm not going to speak for other commissioners, I was an advocate for the other proposal, I think it was four point five million or something of that sort, but because CDBG grant had about three point five million or three point three million, I reduced it just to be, just so we don't have to go to another funding source. But there was a little voice saying, you know, we should really go for this other piece, that's what they really should have, and I think this kind of opens that window to it. I think we're all cognizant about expenditures and where all of the revenue sources might be, and what kind of funding issues we might have, but this is one of the few spots where it's truly a neighborhood center, it's not just within the schools, but it is truly for the neighborhood, and I think it, it, it needs a champion, and I think David Baker is a strong champion for the neighborhood center over there, and I think that's what we need to do, is move forward with it, look at what kind of proposals we do get, and make sure it's used appropriately, and look at how we can fund it, but there's strong contingent of people that use that facility, and even though pickleball is not there as much, those were the people that came and spoke to us, the, in the first few discussions that we had, we might have a pickleball tournament, I don't know, those are, that's what's going on nationally these days, but this opens it up for where it needs to be. So I'm willing to look at proposals that Bruce McMillan is going to bring forth, but I think we need to make this the rec center that it should be for the Douglas community area.
Maybe, Jason, you'll, you may be able to answer this, but if not, Eddie, he may be, you and David may be up on it, but when we started kind of understanding what the impact of the HUD withdrawal, or the inability to do this contract under HUD was, we started putting together kind of the piece parts that could be done under HUD and the ones that could not. My understanding was, one thing that we could do is, we would have the design being done under HUDD funds. That then in turn would mean we had to do a design bid build instead of a design build, which arguably gives you a little less control over the bid, I mean, when the bid comes in, that's, that's when we'll know kind of how much it costs, although I'm sure with his experience, Bruce will be able to tell us within some degree of kind of what the expected amount would be. Is that basically on track, Jason? Okay. So, I mean, that's something we need to keep in mind, that is, the, the design fees that we're considering, this fifty-six thousand is under HUD, so we're not encumbering the city any, anything more there, except that these would be HUD funds that can't be moved somewhere else right now. The, the other thing has been talked about before, and that's one of equity, and, you know, I think this is the time to make sure that these centers are all, to some degree, equitable, and I'm, I'm not quite sure that I understand yet the kinds of things that we want in here, but, you know, we've had several meetings, we've had the survey, and so I'm a little unclear why we don't have a little more clarity on that. In other words, we, we know we have an entryway, we're probably going to have an office, we have open space, we have now a proposal for a track, an elevated track, we have multipurpose room, and I didn't know, we've got, we've got latrines and maybe a place for changing clothes, you know, so it's big enough, we didn't talk about lockers, but those have to be considered, and then kind of the fitness side of this, which you currently have in the, in the southern part of the, of the existing Douglas Center.
Yes.
All these things that help people kind of stay in shape, particularly, you know, when we're in cold weather, so do we have kind of those things identified so that we could plot those on a, on the floor, so we know how kind of the space that we need? I mean, is that pretty well clarified to you yet?
I, I think that it is clarified, staff-wise, we've discussed multipurpose room with, with Bruce quite a bit. Internally, we've reviewed more than ten different designs of trying to work amenities in, in hope that they were affordable in some way. We've always known that multipurpose slash exercise space has always been important for the community, we've heard that repeatedly, long ago, months ago, years ago, when we first started this process, and we first started engaging the community, that is what was driving us on those designs previously, but we could not incorporate all those amenities into that budget, and so we had to back some things out, and backing out multipurpose space, backing out elevated walking track to the design that you've seen most recent. So we, we have a reasonable feel, we want to re-engage with the community and confirm that, multipurpose, exercise, those, those can be interchangeable, multipurpose space, exercise space can be pretty much a shared space, it's just how it's created, how it's programmed.
Well, I know we're going to make Bruce's job really hard, because, I mean, you know, we're going to probably have to have a few, if you put this in, you can't have this and so on, in order to stay within a reasonable budget, but...
Yes.
I think what you're hearing is, we want to, to the degree we can, make these things equitable, so that, you know, if you go to Douglas Center, if you go to either one of the middle schools, it's relatively the same, so we don't kind of have a junior one down here. It's predicated on how many people use it, but still, I mean, equity is important.
I think we have to, we have to make sure we understand the prioritization of those spaces as well, and that's something that exercise will do with Bruce and the community as well. We simply can't put in everything that everybody would like to see, something comes in, something comes out, we're going to end up seeing a design with the highest priorities that we feel like that we can fit in to that three-five area budget.
And if, if, you know, if something is excluded, we ought to know how much it costs to put it in, so, and that's the kind of decisions we have to make.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, further discussion?
The, the only other thing, I mean, I understand, you know, we're committing community block grant money, so I can, I can go with that tonight, because that's not property tax, but I'm, I don't know about the final project, I'm not going to commit to that till I see the, the final numbers, as Jason, you know, said, and the other thing, though, is, you know, we're talking about a multipurpose room, the difference between these centers, though, is that the Douglas Center already has a couple of buildings, so, you know, if, if you can use your multipurpose room in one of the existing buildings, then you don't need to add it to the new one, you know, because it's going to be more at the Douglas Center than, than, than at the two middle schools, when you look at total space, so I, I think all that's got to be considered, it can't be a one-for-one that we're going to build a, you know, a new building at the Douglas Center that's going to match the ones at the middle school, because you already have something at the Douglas Center, we have zero at, at the middle schools right now, so I think you got to look at the total, you know, what you have, when you're done.
We're attempting to do that, I mean, that's why, kitchen-wise, there is a kitchen already in the complex, so could we use future community development block grant funds to enhance that existing kitchen that is in the annex now? Yes, we are considering that, we want to make sure that we do not duplicate, but it is important that we do have facility that, right now, at the Douglas Center, you can do basically one thing in there at a time, because that's what the space is. Creating a facility that you can have multiple activities at one time is what we're really trying to, to work towards. We're not going to stop using any of the facilities that we have now, you know, we're, we're a little bit compressed with our ability to be able to offer, because you, you know, you're there, you've seen that, whenever we have an exercise class, nothing else goes on in there, because you can't. So trying to create something multipurpose-based, multipurpose facility, so that we can have multiple activities, we can bring the, more of the community in at one time to use the facility, that's our, that's our overall theme with all these facilities.
I, and, oh, I'm sorry, David.
I was just going to add to what Eddie said, and that time is prime time, prime time is after work, that's when everybody wants to be there, and so that, that's very important, that you can do more than one thing at one time.
Only thing I wanted to add was, similar, I think, I think it's important, we're talking a lot about equity in the building, but this also has to do with equity, how we treat neighborhoods and communities in Manhattan, right? There are groups deciding right now, actively deciding and guiding the process of what's going to be in the two middle school buildings, and largely, the first time we went through this process, the commission kind of decided, right, like, we're not going to do the elevated track, we're going to do the lower track, so I'm glad we got to re-engage in this process, and so I'm okay with the budget, I mean, obviously reasonable, but if it goes over our original budget, I think there's opportunities that we can explore to potentially find that money elsewhere, I've even heard some maybe potential fundraising opportunities, so I would rather treat this process similar to how we're treating the other two processes, and making sure that the community feels like their feedback was heard, because I'm not sure that that's how they felt the first time, and so it's not just an equity issue in the building, it's an equity issue in how we treat the communities as well, and I want to make sure that we, we do better this time than we did last time.
I'll just point out, we didn't provide the data to you tonight, we can, we conducted an online survey, Mr. Wyatt Thompson did a great job, engages the community very well, we had over three hundred responses, interestingly, one of the highest responding neighborhoods was the Northview neighborhood, with over seventy responses from that neighborhood. We really got good responses from all over the community, it was not just responses, you know, from southeast part of the community, so very interesting, and we want to continue those types of processes. Hosting public meetings sound great, but when you get ten or fifteen people at it, and you're making... making substantial decisions, like we're talking about, I would agree, are we really representing the community with our decision-making? So, Wyatt's done a great job engaging the community and pulling feedback from the entire community. We're going to work with Bruce with that information, make sure the community is represented.
Got it. Yeah, I appreciate the process so far, I'm excited to see something come back that represents the amenities wanted by the groups, and then we can have a discussion up here about that. So, yeah, I'm encouraged by this, and, yeah, we'll figure out a way to get it done and hold our commitment.
Just for the record, with regard to your need for support for your recommendation, I do support a contract amendment for a percentage of the design and a solid estimate of the construction cost, and having in 30 to 60 days, engaging, re-engaging the community, I think, is a really important part, and developing an alternative concept, so then you'll return again, so.
Yes, just, thank you.
Without disclosing too much, I happen to know that David went to school there, so anybody who's trying to do the math in their head to find out how that building is.
You're correct. Thank you.
You're accurate. When you said David Baker's a true champion.
Yeah.
His family has a lot of history.
Give them salt.
All right, well, let's see if there's any public comment on this issue, if you would. So, if you have a comment on this issue, we'd love to hear from you, so please come forward, state your name, sign in, and... I know many of you have had a chance to comment before, so. Okay, seeing no one, we'll come back to any further commission comment or the entertainment of a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize the city administration to finalize and mayor and city clerk to execute contract amendment number two, at the amount of $56,545 with Bruce McMillan, AAI, architects PA of Manhattan, Kansas, for the redesign of the Southeast Neighborhood Recreation Center at Douglas Park.
Second.
Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
So, we'll move to item B, which is to consider resolution number 020519B, setting March the 19th, 2019, as a public hearing date to establish the Aggieville Tax Increment Financing Boundary, or TIF boundary. And, Jason.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor. Wanted to run through our timeline for the TIF. We've had several presentations to you all, talking about this, but wanted to walk through the dates in the coming months. So, as you mentioned, this evening's a resolution to establish that public hearing to create the boundary. We'll use the next 30, 45 days to notify all the owners, occupants, the school district, and Riley County of that hearing. And the hearing is very important, it's obviously the time that the public's going to be here, or we hope they'll be here, to listen to the background on the TIF, and hear the approach, and understand the boundary, and how TIF actually impacts all owners and occupants and school district and Riley County organizational impacts as well. If the commission approves first reading on the March 19th day, public hearing date, that starts the 30-day veto period, at which Riley County or the school district can take action. They are not required to take action by law. Right now, we have presentations scheduled to both those entities before that 30-day time period, they can request us back during that 30-day time period, which we've done in the past, as we've discussed TIF with both entities over the last couple decades, or they can simply let it lie. If 30 days pass and they don't take any action, then we can move forward with second reading of that ordinance to establish the boundary. The summer is when we anticipate coming back with the redevelopment plan, and I would also mention, this summer, we would, and may possibly even this spring, start to approach you about some design contracts. We're starting to recognize the pace at which the hotel at Toltham Blument is pursuing, and in order for us to be there with them, to allow them to open with a finished sidewalk and streetscape, the potential for us to work through some designs and have contracts let in order to finalize and be complete by the summer of 2020, we'd probably need to start designing soon and getting some input and feedback. A lot of that is going to hinge on a water line that we need to build from the hotel south down 12th Street to Moro Avenue. It's integral to their opening, it's integral to them being served with adequate water for their fire suppression. So, that's a project that, since we're going to have the road open, we're going to have a lot disrupted, there's one strategy to come back with a finished product on 12th Street. So, we'll be talking with you later this spring about that as well. Just a reminder, we went with the expanded district, so we're out to 10th Street on the east, we're on 14th Street on the west, we have Anderson and Blument as our northern boundary, and then Fremont Street as the southern boundary. So, all the parcels within this boundary are within the proposed tax increment finance district. Happy to answer any questions about the process, really looking to the public hearing to have a more robust conversation about the TIF. We have given you a lot of information about some estimates and sizing of bonds and projects, but if we could hold a lot of our discussion to that hearing to allow our public to join us, that would be preferred. Happy to answer any questions on the timeline.
Yeah, Jason, I have a question. I understand the boundary, we've talked about this quite a few times. In one of the, page three of your document, you know, it says 28 mils of the USD 383 is 56.268 mils. It excludes the 28 mils, because that goes strictly to capital outlay, so we're only counting the other 28 mils approximately. So, I wanted to know, since the base year is 2018, and they just passed a bond initiative, which might increase property taxes to 7.8, 7.8 mils on some of those, is that 7.8 mils going towards that 28 mils that's for capital outlay, or does it go to, how is that, is that part of the base year? It can't be part of the base year, because that was last year, so how does that calculate into capturing the property taxes in the TIF district?
So, there's a couple of questions there, one of which I believe I can answer, the other I'll probably need to go to the school district and have them give me some feedback. One, just because the TIF district goes in place and a base year is established, the district will still get all the revenue from that base year. So, all the mils involved, well, right, from the base year will still go to the school district. As the district grows over time, they will not be able to capture 28 essentially, if it stays the same. It's 20 mils that go to the state of Kansas, and that's for funding that goes across the entire state. The eight mils is what for the capital outlay that's reserved. The remainder of their mill levy still returns to the school district, you just don't capture the increment on that 28 that returns to the school district. I'll have to ask Eric just exactly how that capital outlay mill levy is going to adjust over time. With 20 going to the state, the eight is what is currently dedicated to debt, and I need to get clarification from Eric, just how he anticipates that fluctuating over time. Or with the addition of 7.8, is there some being replaced, is that part of the 28 that, I think it is more of a part of the 28 that stays with the district, so they won't be able to capture, if it is, the growth in the district. It'll be more absorbed by the rest of the tax base throughout the community. But I can get, and he and I have talked, we're going to work on a better example, so we can show how the district is impacted by the TIF, not only for you all, but for those Board of Education members as well.
I don't know, I may have gotten lost in how you explained it. So, of the 28% that goes, 28 mils that goes to capital outlay, 20, only eight mils of that goes to the school district.
Is local, yes.
Is local, okay. So, if that is local, and then, let's say, the additional 7.8 mils that's going to be attached, I'm thinking this year, how much of that is going to be, since none of this is in the base year, because it's newly implemented, how much of that 7.8 is going to go to capital outlay? And how, is that what you're going to be talking to him about?
That's what I need to ask him about.
And then the rest? Because that's what we would probably be capturing, is what I'm thinking, the part that doesn't go to capital outlay.
With the value of Aggieville today at 20 million, obviously, that value will still kick in to help support any increases that still reside with the school district by way of mill levy. What, I'm going to lean on Eric a little bit to tell me, you know, look into his crystal ball a little bit, as the TIF grows, as the district grows in valuation, and we capture that growth for the fund, how is that going to impact things like the $130 million bond? Exactly.
That's what I'm interested in, so I...
And he, I know he's looked at it preliminary, because when we sat down and talked, we were talking about if, if the TIF didn't exist, then the growth in Aggieville would obviously help with that valuation. What we were trying to figure out, our mill levy, our mill is worth roughly $550,000, their mill is worth over $700,000. So, it's over 700 million in terms of total valuation, whereas Aggieville's 20 of that. So, it's a very, it's a low percentage of the overall total, but we should be able to calculate out some incremental growth taking place, and how that would impact their local mill option.
Because we're also anticipating the property valuations to go up because of growth and the redevelopment that might be happening there at the same time.
We do, and we have to factor in not only the growth in Aggieville, but the growth of the entire region, and how it impacts. And that value of the mill, as you all know, the years you've been on the budget, the value of the mill just keeps increasing, because the valuation of the entire broader area goes up. So, sometimes it's offset, but clearly, if you're going to go from 20 million to 60 million in Aggieville, three times the value, and we're basically telling them they're not going to be able to capture that growth for 20 years, it will have an impact on the rest of the tax base.
I would like that information, thank you.
Yep.
I think we all would.
I think, you can go ahead.
You've mentioned the revenue projections, that you've tried to come in with a low, moderate, and high, and that you're, the estimate you're going with is a moderate? Is that?
That's what we've had spring set size our bonds based on.
Yeah, okay. And I think that's important for us, even low, maybe. I just think there's a lot of drag right now on the economy, and it's kind of worrisome. So, the lower expectations, the better.
Yeah, in our experience with downtown and the TIF, and even the mall TIF, 20 years is, it's a long time. And a lot can happen, obviously, in two decades, and we've seen districts withstand economic downturns, and we've also seen districts take advantage of upturns.
Sure.
So, when these analysts come in, they are very conservative, and, and again, I will get into this a little bit more deeper on the 19th.
Sure.
And we can dive into some of those numbers and some of the analytics of it all, but yeah, they're fairly conservative in their approach.
We do have, we'll have a public hearing, right? Yeah.
Just wanted to ask about that water line. That water line has to be constructed regardless, I mean, before the TIF even enters into it, right? I mean, this is part of our, of our upgrade. The only piece that I didn't understand, Ron and I had talked about this a little bit this morning, but when we get up to the corner on Blument, does that link with a pipe going north? Or does it just stop there and then we have to completely dig up?
So, water or storm water? You talking water?
Yeah, well, the water goes back down to Moro.
So, Commissioner, eventually, the overall plan is to get from Fremont Street.
Right.
Down 12th to Carney. There's a large 16-inch water main in Fremont, there's a large 12-inch water main in Carney, both of those come directly from the plant, so they're under pretty good pressure, pretty good volumes. The goal is to link those two through 12th Streets, so we have fire flow for whatever businesses, and then whatever fire flow that Scott would need, should he have to go down there and fight a fire.
We have parallel lines, one running on Moro, one running on Blument, and as Brian mentioned, we're trying to eventually make this connection, but head south as well.
Head south to get to Fremont. There's a 16-inch water main in Fremont that, the goal is to get there eventually. If we get underneath 12th Street between Moro and Blument, we can come back later and make those connections without impacting the hotel.
And sewer line is okay going up towards Raton?
Yeah, so Olson Associates, about a year ago, did a comprehensive sewer, storm sewer water plan for Aggieville. They identified that the sewer system's in good shape.
The other thing, just kind of a gratuitous comment here, the, I think the total valuation of our tax base is something like $550 million, so we're talking about maybe the withhold of about 1/25th of what might normally be collected, so I think we're relatively in good shape with the school district and so on. And their draw, as you pointed out, is not only the city, but it extends out into Blue Valley and up into Riley County a little bit, so that's why the mill rate evaluation is higher than ours. Any further comments, or? Let's ask for public comment, unless Trent wants to come forward. So, no public comment being heard, we'll come back to the commission and see if there's a proposal for motion.
I would just like to say that I support the broader Aggieville boundary to 10th, to, yeah, to 10th Street, east to 10th, because I think it opens up new possibilities for Aggieville to grow in some way, whether it's commercial or residential, it just permits that additional opportunity, and I think that's important. And of course, you know, this is the kickoff for that future development by adopting the boundaries for this TIF, so it's, if you're ready for a motion, I'd be glad to do that. Unless others want to speak. Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 020519-B, setting March 19th, 2019, as the date for a public hearing to establish the Aggieville Tax Increment Finance District Boundary in Manhattan, Kansas.
Second.
It's called a roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
We'll now move into item seven, which is executive session, and so I'd like a motion that I think is listed on everyone's agenda, and, oh, well, I was going to get to that a minute there. This normally takes about 45 minutes. You say 45?
I don't know how much discussion you want.
What's, what's been the?
We can't.
What I would propose is that we come back at 8:45.
Okay.
And if you embed that in the motion, that'd be great.
I move recess into executive session to conduct the annual performance evaluation of the city manager pursuant to the exceptions set forth in KSA 75-4319B1, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to resume the open meeting at 8:45 PM in the city commission room. I second the motion.
Call and roll.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.[595.32]
I move we resume and extend recess, do I read the whole thing again? Reassess into executive session to conduct the annual performance evaluation of the city manager pursuant to the exception set forth in KSA 75-4319B1, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel and to resume the open meeting at nine, nine o'clock PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Call the rule.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
And Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes.
And Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. After returning from executive session, and we are not going to recess again, we'll simply state that no binding action was taken during executive session, therefore no vote in the open meeting as needed. And there being no further business, we'll adjourn.